We are live captioning our meetings. Please look at the chat window of the WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. I'm going to deviate from the script for a minute only because for some of us, this is the very first time we've sat in this room for a board meeting and maybe the very last time, given our action at the last board meeting. So I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that some of the equipment is new and different and the seating is new and different. And at least for counting how many, one, two, three of us, it's the first time. So with that, we have some guests here. I'm not going to introduce them, but they're here to speak to the agenda review items if we need to do that. And so I'm now going to formally call to order the agenda review meeting, the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of November 12th. Today, we'll review the agenda for the November 25th, 2025 board meeting. And we're not sure whether we'll be back in this room or not, but we'll figure it out once we have our technology challenges dealt with. Let the record reflect that it is 4:34. And now for the record, I will call a roll of the board members. We have some that are virtual, so they'll respond via online. Pamela Smith, Ms. Smith, I believe she is not here because she is ill. Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith, Jaclyn Smith. Ms. Sullivan.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
And myself. So with that, we do have a quorum, and I'm going to do our agenda review first. And since not a single person sent me a note saying they didn't like the more shortened and efficient method of agenda review, I'm going to do it again until someone tells me they hate it, which I would be shocked if they did. So for the agenda for the 25th and the regular meeting, we have our normal operational reports, starting obviously with the student life report, which will come from Berdus Valley Community College, faculty executive council report, the adjunct faculty report, the staff representation, awards and recognition, and then the chancellor report. And I think that's going to focus on the strategic plan update. Is that correct? Or no? That plus a couple of other items that will be from the chancellor. And then we will go to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members have questions about today or we'd want pulled to the regular agenda? I'm not hearing anything from anyone at this point. So with that, the next item is the non-consent action items, of which we have none at the moment on the agenda. And then on our first reading information report, we will go through the employment and separations report, which you are familiar with. We will also have under the monitoring reports, a budget analysis report fund. And we don't have that document yet, but you will have it prior to the board meeting. And from there, we move into our community linkage reports that we are used to doing as well as the next meeting dates. And with that, that is the new expedited agenda review process. And hopefully, all of that will continue to work. So at this point, I'd like to move into, we have two study sessions that are posted for review. We're going to start this evening with the budget update from our chief operating officer and from our vice chancellor, business services. Leanne and Kim, are you to start?
Good afternoon, President Bitter Smith, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the executive team and guests. Thank you for allowing us to present this afternoon. I'm Leanne Bone, chief operating officer for the district. And with me is Kim Grunio, Vice Chancellor of Business Services and Chief Financial Officer. So we are not normally in front of you in November to talk about a budget update. And this is not really a normal budget update. We'll not be talking about the details of our general fund budget or our other funds. But we really wanted to pair this discussion with what you'll hear next, the legislative agenda coming up, as it talks a little bit, actually quite a bit, about how we compare against other community college districts and state funding. So we thought it was a great opportunity to talk about our priorities, our realities and our challenges. Next slide, please. So today, we'll go over, we will do a high-level general fund budget overview. We're going to talk about base growth in both revenues and expenditures, as well as strategic funding needs. So Kim is going to cover those things, and then she'll turn it back over to me. I'll talk about what voters want from our community colleges. We'll talk about state funding commitments and how Maricopa compares. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim. Thank you, Leanne. President Bitter Smith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of SGE C colleagues and guests. Just give me one second as I get myself in order, because it's all, it's funny. We change one thing and I'm all discombobulated. So anyway, so as Leanne shared, today, we're going to talk about what we anticipate for fiscal year '27. As of now, we'll come back in January for a full presentation of the general fund. And then again, more final figures in March. So those will look probably a little bit more like what you've seen in the past. Today is just slightly different. Next slide, please. So first, we're going to talk about base revenue growth. And we're going to start with our expectations. And these are largely changes based, sorry, based on trending. Property taxes and some of this you've seen before. You can see down the left side there, our revenue lines that we have in the general fund, property taxes and tuition fees being the largest portion, of course. We are anticipating about $14.5 million in new construction for fiscal year '27. The increase in tuition and fees of about $10.7 million is based on actual numbers for fiscal year '25, with an addition for anticipated growth in '26, and then 3% growth anticipated for fiscal year '27. So that is a compounding number. That's how we get to the $10.7 million. If at some point you all can't hear me, let me know, because I feel like I'm turning away from the microphone and just wave or tell me to move or something. We don't, as you can see, anticipate any changes expected for STEM, investment income or miscellaneous. And just as a reminder, STEM funding is included in the state budget. So we probably will not know anything, let me rephrase that. We will not know anything until the state passes their budget. And as a reminder, last year, they did that in June of the year ahead. So we probably won't know those even in March when we come together. So this gives us, if you go to the kind of the bottom right-hand corner there, gives us anticipated revenue or revised base revenues of just under $25 million. And we'll come back to that in a few minutes. And next slide, please, Elsa. So this slide and the next slide, we just wanted to share that in this presentation of data, we are breaking the expenditure budget changes into two different categories. We are going to talk about base growth and then also strategic needs. Base expenditure growth, which is on this slide, are really those expense changes that keep us closer to market or are reflective of economical changes. So not necessarily Maricopa doing anything new and different, but trying to maintain what we've got and continue again to stay at market or reflect economic conditions. So we'll start with salaries and wages. And so you can see a $14 million increase there that does have an assumption of 3% salary growth with an additional $350,000. And you may remember from past presentations that $350,000 is about employee policy changes, such as educational advancements, those kinds of things. We do like to try to comply with policy. Employee benefits shows about a $10.3 million increase. This includes changes related to the salary increases that you see on the line above. And it does also include about a $6 million increase in our self-insured medical plan. I think everybody probably remembers that we're about $18 million out from having that fund to be solvent again. So what we've done is we've really planned to break that into three chunks. This one will look like an increase in employer contributions of $6 million. The next two may not look like that. They may look different, and we'll have more conversations on that in the future. I just wanted to be clear as to how we got to $10 million, which is quite a large increase. Scholarships and awards, a $1.5 million increase. This is about presidents and honor scholarships. We overexpended our '25 budget, so we need to get '26 increased for that. We are on track in fiscal year '26 as we were in '25. And then as we add enrollment projections, that's likely to increase the number of students utilizing those scholarship funds. So that's where the $1.5 million comes in. The next line down is supplies and services. And we have about a $3.2 million increase plugged in there. That is assuming about a 2.9% consumer price index change. Funding inflation is not something Maricopa has done when we have talked about rising expenses. Again, this is about trying to consider the economical conditions that are in front of us. If this, if we end up getting to this place where all of this gets funded, that's what goes into the allocation budget or the allocation model and gets filtered through. But it's something that is a real cost to our entire system, colleges and the district office alike. So we wanted to get that plugged into this particular approach. And then that really covers the fixed charges, if there's any changes in there as well. All of that, we think, fits within the $3.2 million. And you don't see any other recommended changes there that we've got or assumed changes. So that's an increase of about $29.2 million in ongoing expenses for really what are our current operations. And if we can go to the next slide, Elsa, this is something that is a little bit newer, at least the way we're presenting it, I think. This is about strategic funding needs. We've talked about the base changes. Now we'll talk about the strategies. These funding needs have been gathered via conversations throughout the system in multiple ways. They've been shared with the advisory budget council as well. However, I need to point out the kind of sentence at the bottom. The list is not prioritized and does not reflect any funding commitments at this point in time. This is what we've gathered through various conversations. And we felt like it was appropriate for us to share with the board and our college community that these are the things that are out there. So what we'll look at first, well, a housekeeping note, because every time we do budget presentations, I usually get the question. So I've got to try to get better and say it upfront. When you look at this table, and you'll see that in most cases, there's numbers in '27. Sometimes there's no numbers in '28 through '31. This becomes adopted base budget. So if you see it in '27, it's carried through all of the years. And those that have numbers in each column, those are additive. So if I can jump down to the second line, because that's easy math for me to do right now, the workforce development leadership line, by the time we get to '20, '31, there'd be $5 million in there. So it's an addition of $1 million each year. If I can drop down to student advisors, we have the $4.3 million in there. That doesn't mean we're going to have student advisors in '27, and then we're going to let them all go in '28. Those become the base budget. That's permanent funding that goes on. So that's just a budget approach that we have used for a long time. But I know it can be quite confusing, so I want to start there. So now we'll go through the lines fairly quickly. Bachelor's programs. So I think everybody's aware too that we're using Prop 207 funding for the launch years. So years one through three of any new bachelor's degree programs. There's a lot of concern that has been raised as to whether or not all 10 colleges will be able to institutionalize those expenses after year three. So this infusion of resources is to try to continue the funding for the bachelor's degree programs. Again, those would flow through the model and get allocated out through the model. That second line is workforce development leadership. This is annual ongoing resources for the system to support the chancellor's workforce vision. So we've plugged in, and you'll notice too, these are nice round numbers. So some of these are estimates and guesstimates that we are making. If these things move forward through the budget process, then we can get better at how we've come up with the numbers. But we needed to start somewhere, and this is our starting point. The next line down is student advisors. You will see a goal there of getting to 600 to 1. We are currently at 772 advisors, I'm sorry, 772 students to each advisor. The 600 to 1 isn't even necessarily industry best practice. And $4.3 million probably won't get us to 600 to 1, but at least it makes progress, which is something we sincerely want to do as a system. The next line down, expanded college and high school services is about $6 million. This is about, really, two of our colleges have robust resources dedicated to supporting college and high school students and programs. This infusion of resources would allow and assist the eight other to build their support. And this also is in support of the chancellor's vision to increase college-going behavior for our K-12 students. Next line down, student services enrollment-related growth. We've been and continue to project enrollment increases for our students. We need to be able to support those students when they come to us. So this again is about adding additional resources with which to do that. Residential faculty expansion, the last line there, $3 million a year. This is in support and provides funding for the new faculty ratio that was approved in the residential faculty agreement last year. And a $3 million a year dollar amount there would equate to about 20 new faculty annually. To my other notes. So Elsa, go back, please. So really, to kind of encapsulate the last three slides, the total base revenue increase of $25.1 million, less the expenditure increase in base of $29.2, creates already a shortfall of about $4 million. And then if we would like to fund any of these strategic needs that we have on the last slide that I was presenting, then we really are going to have to talk about whether or not we're able and willing to increase revenues. Leanne's going to share a lot more about revenues and the opportunities we have about revenues. But this kind of will take us into that conversation. The last thing I want to share too is that on this slide in particular, because I feel like I need to say this with people listening, that the intention isn't to take the $17.6 million and carve it out of the allocation model. We will need to analyze where these expenses are going to be. More than likely, the vast majority of it, if it's not all of it, would get into the college allocation pool and then filter down through the allocation model. So we're trying to preserve the allocation model that we worked so hard to get to and make progress on and not really start to tear it apart, because we're going to do all of these one-off things. So that's just something that if we, if we get to a place where we've got new resources to do some of these things, we will work through how they work in the allocation model or make changes to the allocation model itself, if that is what we need to do. I think that's it. So I will turn it over to you, Leanne.
Kim, before you do that, I mean, are there questions on the board on this? Dr. Norene?
Can you just go over again what you were saying before about the blank spots on there?
Yep. Absolutely. So when we do budget schedules that are about the base budget, so it's a technical, non-technical term, that that base then is your carried-forward amount into future years. So if we look at the student advisors, the $4.3 million, that $4.3 million is in the base budget from that point forward. So we don't put it in and take it away. That would be a one-time use. This actually comes into the base ongoing revenues, ongoing expenditures. So that 4.3 would happen each and every single year. It's not new money to be reallocated differently. So once we hire 50 advisors, I'm sorry, I actually don't even know how much that funds. I should probably have known that, didn't think about it. If it's 50 advisors, those 50 advisor positions will continue to exist in perpetuity until a different budget decision is made. So it doesn't come in and go out. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. So the bottom line on all of those, that's how much it's going to increase each year? That's how much we want to add to it each year?
Yes.
Okay. And so at the end of the 2020, whatever, the 2031, that's just the increases for that year? Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yep, thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. Any thoughts on the board first? No. So expanded college and high school services, is that coded for dual enrollment? Or is this beyond the dual enrollment programs?
Thank you, President Bitter Smith. It can be any programs that are about college and high school. So we have, and I know I'm going to get something wrong, and I know somebody will correct me. So dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, hoop of learning programs, ACE programs, all of those are considered, are charter high schools that we have on our two colleges. All of those are college and high school programs. So this is not exclusive to dual enrollment.
It's all the bundled services? Okay. And then my second question is, on the Prop 207 issue, can you add a little color to that for the rest of the board? I mean, I think some of us are reading headlines as to how that might impact other service providers. But what's, what's your prognosis on what will happen with those dollars?
Regarding whether or not they're going to decrease?
Correct, yes.
So I don't know that I have an answer for you on that. I can certainly look into it and find out. It's all based on, as we know, the revenues that come into the entire pool. So I don't, I don't know what.
Okay, so it's predicated upon demand from all the sources?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the formula for how it's divided is in statute. So it's just a matter of whether or not the total pot that comes in goes down. Thank you. And?
Other questions? Anne?
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. I just want to reiterate something that Kim said when she began that last slide, the strategic funding needs. That is not necessarily a complete list. It may not even be a good list. Those numbers may change. I don't even know if I agree with everything on that list. And probably, if you ask different people in our system, they would have different opinions. But as Kim and I, and I think the chancellor as well, talk to different people throughout the system, these are the things we hear about. They are strategic, and they're things that we don't have money carved out for. So that's why we bring them here today, just to say this is what we're hearing from our system. Okay, so we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk about what voters want. If you could go back to the other slide first, thank you. I'll just give a little intro to this. A number of us last month went down to Tucson to attend the Arizona Community College Administrator's Conference. And we got to hear Rich Nickel from Education Forward Arizona speak. Wonderful presentation, very informative. In 2022, Education Forward did a poll of registered voters to learn about their priorities and their interests with regard to higher education. And so I took this and really thought this, this really shows the will of the people with regard to higher education. So with Rich's permission, I took his really intense, like 75-minute presentation, and I have two slides that just really, I think, drive home the points about what people who pay taxes in this state want to see. If you go to the next slide, please, Elsa. So if you look here, I won't go through every single point, but really overwhelmingly, Arizona voters support expanding access to, to career training and readiness to early college offerings. And they want to make these things affordable. So that's a high-level summary of what we hear from people who vote and people who pay taxes in this state. And then if you go to the next slide. So not surprisingly, those interests kind of directly tie to some of the concerns that they expressed as well. So voters express concern about student debt, about affordability of community colleges or any university as well, about insufficiency of funding for those institutions. And they're concerned there aren't enough Arizonans getting degrees and certifications that help them advance in their careers. Right, so what, if I summarize that, they think what we do is important, right? They think what we do here is important, and they think that perhaps, I could say, it, it should be a higher priority. So moving along, if we're going to respond to those concerns of our voters and based on the presentation, the materials that Kim just presented, we've got a resource gap. And so to talk about that resource gap, I think it might be helpful to go over what community college funding looks like in this state overall. So next slide. And the one after that, please. All right, so I have two slides here that look a little bit different. This is the revenue profile for community college districts that receive state aid in Arizona. And as you can see, 59%, 60% from property tax, 17.6% from state aid, 16.9% from tuition and fees. And so even though property tax is the overwhelming majority, this still is kind of a three-legged stool, right? They have some balance, some diversification of their revenues. If you go to the next slide. This is us. So this is not a three-legged stool. It's not a two-legged stool. My husband was looking over this presentation. He said, "That's a pogo stick." You got one leg and you're kind of hopping all the time. So I kind of liked that analogy. It's my only joke for the evening, so I hope you enjoyed it. So what this does is it makes us completely reliant on taxpayers and students to cover our needs. So as those things fluctuate, really, we're at the whim of those two funding sources. I do want to say, this is general fund. It does not include 207. It does not include 301. It doesn't include restricted state aid. STEM is restricted state aid, except for the little part that we carve out for administrative needs. So to dig a little deeper into these two primary sources, tuition and then taxes, so if we go to the next slide. So tuition affordability. You can see here, Maricopa is in green. The average is in red. So we are $8.59 below the average. And if you look at these groupings here, it's, you've got two that are, are quite inexpensive at $75 per credit hour. You have three that kind of bring that average up. We're kind of right in that middle, $95 to $105. We're kind of right in the middle of that grouping, telling us that our tuition makes sense, I think, in our state. Of note, Central Arizona and Northland Pioneer. Central Arizona receives over $1,100 per footsie in all of their state aid. And Northland Pioneer receives about $10,000. So they are heavily funded in state aid. You know, it's, I think, good when looking at tuition, just to remember that our obligation, according to the state constitution, and I know that everyone here knows this, but important just to reiterate that we make education as close to free as possible, right? So that's something that I think always is in the back of our minds. Next slide, please. All right, this is actually not related to community colleges at all, but I could not help myself. And members of the advisory budget council would have driven me out of this room with a pitchfork if I did not include this. Our top competitor for students locally here is ASU. That's, I think, just a fact that doesn't even need to be stated. If you look at what it costs a full-time student at Maricopa, and this assumes a bachelor's degree seeking, so I've loaded in the $147 in tuition. I've put a registration fee in here that you can't quite see. I've also put in here course fees, even though not every one of our courses has course fees, but I've assumed on the high end for course fees. We are dwarfed by ASU. I am not going to go through all their fees, because it's not that important and it would take up another 20 minutes. But suffice to say, they're about six and a half times more expensive than we are. All right, moving on, let's talk about property taxes for a couple of minutes. Next slide, please. So again, here, if you look at our tax rate, Maricopa's in green, the average is in red. So we are far below the average, 31% in fact, under the average and the third lowest overall. So I would say from an affordability perspective for taxes, I would say that we certainly are on the affordable end. This doesn't quite tell the whole story. So if you go on to the next slide, Elsa. A probably better way to compare the community college districts is looking at how many of them are at their maximum levy. So fun, fun historical fact, right? Our levy was set in 1980. We hear that that year a lot, 1980. The levy was set based on what jurisdictions spent in that year. So it wasn't even a measure of this was sufficient, it was insufficient. It was just, this is what you're spending this year. And the statute allows for 2% annual growth year-over-year. And that's since been actually revised in 2006. They actually changed the base year to 2005. And so if you weren't using your maximum levy before that, well, you are out of luck, because they reset it for 2005. And even since then, in 2012, there's been additional changes to the property tax statutes that reduce the amount of year-over-year growth an individual property taxpayer can be charged. So lots of changes there. But I think what's important to notice here is there are four districts that have maxed out their rates. In this case, those are the four that maxed out. That's not the average. We are still in green. You have Central Arizona, that's at the very low end. But really, we're really part of that group right in the middle that has a fairly similar percent of their max levy that we, that we hit every year. I have not had any conversations in my tenure here with anyone at the legislature about state aid funding, but I think some of the feedback that's been shared with me is we are told, well, you can increase your property tax levy. Just, just get the money you need through property taxes. No other jurisdictions are required to max out their levy in order to get stated. So I just think that's an interesting dichotomy that's important to mention. So, all right, next slide, please, Elsa. And then I think this is my last property tax slide. If you look at our share of a Maricopa County property taxpayers' tax bill, we're 10 and a half percent, right? So a fairly small chunk of every dollar you pay in property taxes comes to the community colleges. All right, next slide, please. So I'm going to shift gears again a little bit and talk about state funding commitments. So the state funds community colleges this year $103.5 million. All of that money comes from the state general fund. So next slide, let's talk a little bit about what the state says about community colleges. This is from the governor's executive budget for the current year. I will not, I will not read this word for word to you, but the gist of it is that they're very supportive. read this word-for-word to you, but the gist of it is that they're very supportive of the services that we provide. They think that we provide tremendous value to our local economy and our residents. So it's a great supportive message. And let's talk for just a minute about what the state general fund revenue looks like. And this is, this is just important to understand where they get their money from. So you can, this is a $17 billion budget. I mentioned it's community colleges get about $103 million this year out of that $17 billion pie. State and use, sales and use tax is about 46% of the revenue going into the state's general fund. Individual income is another 31 and a half percent, and then corporate incomes about 11%. 62% of the state's population live in Maricopa County. And it is, I think, a reasonable assumption to say that a proportionate number of businesses that are paying that corporate tax are also in Maricopa County. So if we have a $17 billion budget, $103 million going to community colleges, and 62% roughly of the people paying into that money are in Maricopa County. And then if you go to the next slide. Our current funding from the state, operating aid is zero. So you're paying into a state system that's supporting community colleges, except not your community college. And that's not to say the community colleges that are receiving it don't deserve that money. That's not at all the point here, but the point is that we continue to receive no money in Maricopa. You can see here that the red line shows the percent of our general fund that was comprised of state aid going back to fiscal 1980. It was almost 30%. It took a, started to dip really in the Great Decession and Recession, and then precipitously declined in fiscal '12. So, you know, you can run numbers any way you want to yield the result that you're looking for, but one number I found interesting is if you took the amount that we received, we received back in fiscal 2010, which is the highest of those years. And if you assumed we just received that much more money every year going forward, just that amount and no more growth, that would have been between then and now $655 million. So that's been diverted elsewhere. And I use that, that word, understanding it's a bit loaded. Diverted could mean the revenue wasn't coming into the state, so they had to make cuts. Or it could mean that tax policy was adopted that didn't bring in the revenue, or it could have gone to a different priority. But it is money that historically Maricopa was receiving, and it's not any longer. All right, next slide, please. So this is no surprise to anyone in this room. This is the distribution of community college students throughout the state. Not only do we in Maricopa serve the most community college students, but we actually serve more community college students than all of the rest of the districts combined. So, and then the next slide kind of pulls these things together very nicely. Maricopa is green. The red is everyone else. So the student distribution, we make up almost 60% of the student distribution. We get 8.6% of the funding, and that is the STEM funding because that is considered state aid. It does not go into our general fund because it's restricted. So just the disparity between these two graphics, I think, speaks pretty clearly to the issue that we are facing. So next slide. So it is not just us lamenting about the concerns with the disparity in state aid funding. The Arizona Tax Research Association, which is not always public sector, super friendly, not always tax-friendly, has made this statement. I will read this one. "State aid does not equalize resources across the community college system. Rural districts receive significant state support through equalization and other aid," which I would actually argue should continue. I don't think there's any issue with that. "While urban districts rely almost entirely on local taxes and tuition, for example, Graham receives $12,088 per footsie while Maricopa receives $150." So if you want to see that information graphically, on the next slide. Again, so here we have averages in red. Maricopa is in green, except on the right because we don't get anything, so there's no green. All state aid is on the left, and that includes that equalization. It includes the rural aid that, like I said, I don't think anyone would say that we should be eligible for or should be taken away from other community college districts. The right side is operating aid. So that is where we receive nothing, and the average is a little over $1,000. So if we received the average, that would be about $28 million a year. All right, so I'm going to, I have, I think, one more section here, but I want to pause and see if there are any questions on anything so far.
Questions from board members? Just one observation, having had the great pleasure of sitting through several ATRO reviews of our budget, I just want to reemphasize Leanne's comments about, you know, ATRO is very much a watchdog and does, has a service in that regard, but the fact that they continue to advocate and point out what's obvious to us is extremely useful. So I just want to make sure the board is looking at that carefully because it's thinking going to be important for a later, later conversation, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Davis, my apologies.
Great presentation, me and Kim. And we've had several talks about my district and how conservative my district is. I think this is a great presentation to use for legislators. I would ask if you could provide some examples of savings that we've had through efficiencies in the system, because I think that's going to come up.
Thank you, President Bittersmith, Ms. Davis. And I, that is work that is underway. We have kind of two large bodies of work there. The administrative areas, our administrative services are somewhere in the neighborhood of 30% of our spend right now, we think. And we do have the vice presidents of administrative services looking into those areas. And then on the others, the bigger chunk, which is really instruction and instructional support, I think that that work will be underway as we move forward a little bit further with the academic master plan. But, but agreed, we always have to look internally for those savings as well. I don't know that we've got $28 million of savings to redeploy elsewhere, but that point well taken. Thank you.
Let me just ask Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Smith, any questions so far? Harry, none, then we'll go back to Leanne.
No, thank you. Good presentation, very informative.
Thanks for the information. Johnny says hello.
All right, next slide, please, Vanessa. So we've talked about how we have a gap in our own budget if we're looking to fund strategic initiatives. We've talked about the lack of state aid, which I think we can all agree on that point, but we do not have any control over. So let's talk for just a minute about the things we have control over, and that's tuition, and that's taxes. So next slide, please. So this is meant to be more demonstrative. This is, again, it's not a recommendation. It's not a request. It is just to talk about kind of what this profile looks like. And what this shows is if we put out there a number to say we want to increase our general fund revenue by $20 million, that's the number because it's relatively close to the information that Kim provided. We could put that all on tuition, and so that would be an $11 per credit hour tuition increase, and then nothing more on taxes. Or to the other extreme, you could leave tuition where it's at, and you could increase taxes by 3.3 cents. Or anything in between, right? Gets yields that same result. So that's just an idea of like, these are the types of conversations that we, we could engage in and the research that we could do. An $11 tuition increase, that math is super easy. $330 for a full-time student. I hope I did that right. It is still less than the inflation index rate of $118. The math on what would a 3.3 cent tax increase to a taxpayer is much harder math. And so one of the things we have to assume is an average home value. So on an average home value of $500,000, which is on the high side, but not, I think ridiculously on the high side, it's $5.90 per year, and that would still keep us under, well under our maximum levy. And so this too, this was a source of conversation in the Advisory Budget Council. So next slide, please. So what do those numbers mean in real people's words? The student impact of $330, 98 gallons of gasoline. It might be a car payment, depending on where you live and what month it is. It could be one or two months of utilities. It could be a month of groceries and $5.90 on a taxpayer, couple gallons gasoline. You're not going to make a dent in a car payment or utilities or groceries, but some air fresheners, some light bulbs, and maybe a Big Mac. Kim and I think it'll buy you about 80% of a Big Mac, depending on where you go. So. And next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, bottom line, sorry. So in summary, annual base revenue growth is not sufficient to cover our basic expenditure growth, much less our strategic interests. Our voters here value education beyond high school and worry about its affordability. The state funding formula significantly undervalues what we do and our contributions to the economy. And lastly, we offer a tremendous value to taxpayers and students alike. So with that, I will take any questions, and Kim will take questions as well.
Questions from board members. Dr. Thor?
Thank you also for the presentation for both of you. It's very informative. Share with us the process and the timeline going forward. Specifically, is it your intention to bring us a recommendation for tuition increase and/or property tax increase?
Thank you, President Bittersmith and Dr. Thor. So that's an active conversation in the Advisory Budget Council right now. They are looking at a different revenue options. The work that they've done so far has, has not built up to a certain number. So that's part of what we're trying to figure out, is what number should we be building up towards? The $20 million, perhaps too high, but is there a strategic priority that is a top priority of the board and of the chancellor that we need to be funding next year? And if so, let's build our revenue base to ensure that gets, that gets funded. So it's, the answer is, there is an interest in presenting something, but I think there's similarly an interest in getting a sense from the board and the chancellor of what makes sense this year. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing that I would add to that is, timing-wise, any tuition changes, we will want to have for first read to the board in January with adoption in February, so we can make sure we get all changes done in March when we open enrollment for the fall. So that's part of the reason why we're here now and looking at kind of where we think we are, where we think we might want to go as a system. So we'll need to get kind of some of that feedback on where we think we really want to go so that we're prepared for January, both for the budget presentation, but also to be able to bring a tuition item if that is the desired direction.
At the risk of being presumptive, is there not a third option as well, too, pointing to the opportunity to describe to the state that we are missing in action? And, but I realize that requires a whole different perspective, but I'm sure it's coming here in the next presentation at some point.
That is, in my opinion, that's option number one, two, and three, because it's, it's, it's so obvious. The disparity is so obvious. I think it's the appropriate ask. I think the revenue increase locally would only be in the absence of the state not meeting their obligation to Maricopa.
So however, I'm going to point out that that would be part of the state budget, which we likely won't know until next May or June. So we will potentially then have missed the opportunity for tuition changes, or they would come late, which as a system for decades, we've decided that's not what we want to do. And then property taxes, we would take action on that in May for the May budget, and would start in April and do the public hearing and everything in May. So timing is not going to be our friend necessarily unless we get clear indications from the state very early that there's a potential for any kind of funding. And the least of my experience, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, we don't usually get that kind of information early enough. So that would be a concern I would have.
Questions? Dr. Neri?
Yeah, I just wondered, what's the appetite for considering tuition and the cost of attendance differently? I know we've talked about this before at the ACCT conference I was at. I went to a presentation called All In. And what they do, this was, let's see, I wrote it down someplace. Kinswaki Community College, I believe in Michigan or one of those Great Lakes states, where they wrap tuition, fees, and books all into one fee, one tuition fee, and that's all the students pay. So their books are included, their fees are included, and it makes it so transparent for the students, makes it easier for the business office, makes it easier for everybody to calculate what it's going to cost. And I know that's not something we can do like that and get done here, but I just wondered if there's an appetite for considering that, for looking into, even if we wrap books up into tuition, so that students don't have to worry about the additional cost of books? Because I think when, when I talk with students, that's one of their big concerns. Or you can all talk about course fees, too. Wrapping all those up into the tuition, because when we raise tuition, one of the questions students and folks are going to ask is, what are we getting for this? And if we can offer them something in addition to, you know, just a higher cost of tuition because of the higher cost of maintaining quality education, we can offer them something more, you know, their fees or their books or that's it. So I just want to know if there's an appetite for that.
President Bittersmith, Dr. Neri, we were actually, I think we are like rochamboing over who would respond to your questions. It's a great question, and I think it's worth a conversation. I don't, it's not something I'm prepared to respond to right now, but certainly noted. Thank you.
Other questions, members?
Thank you. I do have a question. And thank you. This has been a really great presentation. So at the tax rate increase that you list on this slide, 0.033%, and you note that it's that's under, well under the maximum levy. Just for comparison purposes and to understand, like relatively where we are, if we were to go to the maximum levy, what would that, that increase look like? Do you know?
Yes, Ms. Butler. So, well, I can tell you, the, the 3.3 cents here gets us about $20 million, and we're under our max levy by 85 million. So roughly multiply that by, you know, four-ish.
That's fine. Thank you.
Again, other, other questions? If not, anything you want to add in closing comments before we move to the next step?
I'll just thank you for giving us this opportunity, and we thought it paired very nicely with the legislative agenda that I know is up next, so.
There was a reason we switched the order, so, understanding that. No more questions for, I will, we'll move to legislative agenda presentation. Lauren? For the record, Lauren is the Director of Government Relations, so.
President Bittersmith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the Shared Governance Council, and guests. My name is Lauren Armour. I am the Government Relations Director for Maricopa Community Colleges. Anyone who knows me knows how much I love the work that I get to do on behalf of our colleges. This is such a great job, partially because I always get to talk about really interesting and exciting things, but that has never been truer than it is this year. I always love coming and giving you this presentation of our, of our priorities and giving a bit of a preview of the year to come, to the extent that we can read the tea leaves. But I think that this year, we're poised to start some really meaningful work that I'm excited to get into with you through the course of this presentation. I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my right hand, Abby James, who helped with every step of putting this together and truly every step of our work. So thanks to Abby. Next slide, please. So first, looking in the rearview, we'd be remiss if we did not look past at our successes and some potential ground to gain. So starting with, with some highlights, but a note before I review these successes, as with so much of our work, these successes can't be neatly divided into state wins or federal wins or really any broad line headings. These are all, maybe not all intertwined, but many of them you'll see are intertwined between our state and federal work. So a grain of salt there. So we had some amazing successes in the past year. First, securing first-time funding for our Community College Promise Program in the state budget, an infusion of $3 million with approximately $1 million of ongoing funds in each future year, which is huge. We sort of joked when we stood up the Community College Promise Program as an empty shell that you can't, you can't make a promise you're not going to keep. And so having funding for the first time that then continues on in future years is really what really what's going to bring this program to the heights it was intended to reach. So that's something we're really excited about. We fought hard and secured the full $6 million that we asked for in the state budget for adult education. Those funds rapidly became pivotal. On July 1st, the federal government failed for the first time in the many decades that we've been doing adult education, failed to pay out the expected money to support our adult education programs with no advance warning. We were able to use some of those $6 million as a stopgap measure to stop those services from just plain halting while we dealt with and advocated for the restoration of those funds. Those did come back to us 25 days later, but the damage was reduced because we had secured that additional state investment. So even those who had maybe not been so keen on giving us the full $6 million were rapidly changing their tune after we concluded the budget. And that happened in the course of about two weeks later that those funds came to bear. So that was a really, became really important very quickly. We passed House Bill 2765, which allowed our bachelor's students in education to participate in the Arizona Teachers Academy, just like their university peers. And then we worked with ABOR after that was implemented to secure commensurate funding for our students. So they're getting their due and appropriate share after a bit of work on our part. So we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. We statewide, there was $1.5 million for dual enrollment tuition support that we have already put to excellent use, supporting students this year and reducing their tuition. There was also $1.5 million in the state budget for nursing that, again, we're quickly utilizing to support our ongoing programming. We advocated for and secured the release of withheld federal adult education funds, which I mentioned previously, but bears repeating that advocacy was a separate and sustained effort and a successful one ultimately. We advocated for and secured the release of withheld federal trio grant funds. We defended against proposed cuts and other detrimental changes to Pell. I can't tell you how dangerous those were poised to be for our students and for just our programming generally. And so the fact that those were rolled back entirely and relatively swiftly, I'd say, in the scheme of things at the federal level, still, I think, speaks very strongly about how successful community college advocacy efforts are nationwide. We also built strong alliances stronger than ever with our AC4 lobbyists, federal partners, and peer institutions. In difficult times, you make great friendships and great partnerships, and we've certainly brought those to bear and will continue to do so. Next slide. Some ground to gain. For the 11th consecutive year, we received zero operating aid dollars. The formula dictates that we should receive approximately $28.3 million in the coming fiscal year. Yes, having done without that for so long is something that Leanne just spoke with you about and the inequities that that's created in funding statewide. We also sustained a total loss of $4.9 million with the reprogramming of discretionary HSI, Hispanic-serving institution funding. Those funds are being, again, reprogrammed. The dollars are still there and being issued under new framework. So I'm hopeful that we will secure grants under new framework in the future, although the way that that was done was not with any continuity in mind. So if we recoup those dollars, it would be sort of unrelated. It would just be a whole new effort. So we also have not yet secured the upcoming year's adult education funds from the federal government. Significant progress was made prior to the shutdown. The Senate budget proposal currently has that program funded in full. The House version of the same bill has it funded at $0, and those have yet to be reconciled. The Senate proposal also started at $0, and we worked our way up. So I remain hopeful those funds are not needed until July 1. That's when we typically get that dispersment of funds, but typically by this time in the year, it is routine for them to have been approved, and they have not been. So certainly, an area we'll keep a close eye on, and that makes some of our state-level advocacy a little bit more challenging because that's an issue with funding from both sources. Next slide, please. So looking to our annual agenda, each year, we bring forth sort of our broad priorities and our mandate as the Government Relations Office to, yeah, say what we can go out there and ask for, what we should expect. Our internal process was about as lean as it could be this year, and for good reason. We proposed no substantive changes from the '25 to the '26 budget. We did a lot of work revamping the budget, or I'm sorry, the proposal, the agenda in '25 and in '26. It didn't need much, a little bit of polishing, but the content held up year to year. So that was, that made it a little bit swifter. Our internal task force was consulted and approved on the final result. We now have our study session to review the content. You all will vote on the legislative agenda in November, and in December, we will start our work in earnest. Next slide, please. The goals of our agenda. Why do we do an agenda each year? It gives us our general positions and guidance on key policy issues so that we can respond quickly as issues that we can anticipate arise. But we also have ongoing communication with Board members to keep you all informed. We have our weekly Government Relations update email. We do our Chancellor's reports at the Board meetings, and I just want to take the opportunity to say that my door is always open. I think many of you have utilized me as a resource, asked questions, shot me emails, picked up the phone. Please continue to do that. I'm always happy to be a resource to you. This document also gives us the opportunity for enhanced college president engagement. It lets us level set and identify what our goals are so everyone can speak fluently and clearly about what we need and what we do. And just to continue our positive state and federal momentum, which we might not get everything that we want, but I think it is definitely positive momentum in both of those categories. So keeping that going is important.
And Lauren, let me interrupt, and I apologize for interrupting, but just to go back through sort of those goals, and you're talking a lot about a collaborative effort between Board members as well as faculty members and administrators and your shop and communicating all these messages. I'm presuming that's still the intention of this group process is what's going to make us effective, correct?
Yes. I do nothing on my own, and so every step that I go through, this one included, needs to have other eyes on it, and that's all part of this process, making sure that I'm speaking on behalf of the institution in the truest sense.
And this may be in the presentation, and I apologize if I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but to that end, I'm presuming that as we move forward with the goals and things are coming up, all the communication you're already doing will also include if you need help, talking to someone or a group of someones, you'll be asking for that.
Absolutely, always. Yes, you all have been extraordinary resources and will continue to knock on your door as opportunities present themselves. I think those opportunities are going to become more frequent with the sorts of things we're looking to ask for this coming session. Thank you. All right, next slide, please. So getting into the content of the agenda itself, we have three overarching principles that drive our work and encompass our priorities. We open with preserving and strengthening our local governing authority, our ability to self-sustain, make decisions that are best for our mission, for our students. Next slide, please. First principle under that broad line is to enable Maricopa Community Colleges to diversify revenue sources and keep tuition and fees affordable. The first example here is the one that we could probably talk the most about, and I'd like to thank Leanne for her input on how we put these priorities together. She's part of the committee that helped us review all of this and offered some helpful insights. Our top priority for the upcoming session is going to be, if you all take my advice, to reinstate the maintenance and operations funding from the state general fund. We've been without these dollars for 11 years, as I mentioned, since Great Recession cuts. There is now no other priority for the district more important than the restoration of those dollars. Some of you understand that context better than others, I'm sure, but I think the big obstacle since my time in this role has been that we were under our expenditure limit, expenditure limit, our, any maintenance and operation dollars would have been subject to the expenditure limit and therefore not worth getting because we'd effectively be penalized immediately for receiving them. So it wasn't something that was on the table for us. It is now, and I think we'd be remiss not to elevate that priority and start having that conversation. There's no good reason not to, frankly, and lots of good reasons to go forth with that. Other examples in this from past years are supporting efforts to modernize the expenditure limitation formula. We expended lots of effort on that in recent years and pushing back against any constraint to our authority, our local control, our ability to self-govern. Next up. Next, we have affirming Maricopa Community Colleges' ability to provide a wide variety of degrees, certificates, and credentials. Of course, you all will remember the fight for baccalaureate degree authority in recent memory, and if anything in relation to that were to come up, we'd be ready to act. Next slide. Minimizing administrative barriers in legal compliance rules and regulations. We often do this sort of advocacy with agencies, you know, state, whether they're state or federal, trying to put in our two cents, whether in the rulemaking process or otherwise, to try to get the rules to work a little more fairly for the processes that we're engaged in. Next slide. Supporting policies that protect the rights of students, faculty, and staff, both academically and professionally. So really supporting those things without interference, things like student engagement, academic freedom, without the state getting into the process because that's ours to manage. Next slide. Our second principle is create and sustain workforce development initiatives, and obviously very important priority for the district. Next slide. So under this heading, we seek to secure funding for programs responding to the highest need workforce area in the county, state, and nation. We have done this on a smaller level in recent years, asking for particular supports for particular industries. With our approach on focusing on operating aid, I think we'll take a shift away from supportive, asking for funds that are so narrow. We'd like to go a bit broader, but certainly our STEM dollars would fit into this, and we'll continue to advocate for those. We're also seeking to support Arizona's priority sectors. Thank you to Valerie Jones, who helped us identify what Arizona has identified as its priority sectors being healthcare, advanced manufacturing, cyber and IT, construction and finance insurance, a list that just sounds like what we do around, if you walk the hallways, those are just words that you hear in any one of our institutions. So that's not exactly hard, but important for us to keep those top of mind. Preserving and expanding investments in adult education programs, as I mentioned, that gets a little bit complicated this year, unfortunately, because those programs are amazing, but we're going to continue to talk about how amazing they are at a minimum and encourage the state to continue to support them. And then supporting investment in short-term workforce-driven credential programs. Next slide. We support providing short-term credential programs that enhance access to employment. And so seeking investment, again, and leveraging our work to develop and expand programs in high-demand occupational areas and focus on reskilling and upskilling efforts. Next slide. And maintaining the state's STEM and workforce development formula funding. This one deserves a slide of its own because it's important, but also plays in, as I've mentioned, to several other of the slides I've talked about. We utilize our STEM dollars very effectively and to the state's great benefit, so we're excited to keep that process going. Next slide, please. And then helping to launch, grow, and sustain small businesses through investments in small business development and entrepreneurial incubators. We've seen efforts in the past at the Capitol to support, like our SBDC, of course, for example, and those around the state, and of course, are supportive when those opportunities arise. Next slide, please. And we support the development of data infrastructure to capture labor market outcomes. So this is something that we typically do sort of with, through partnerships, not necessarily something we're going to run a bill on, but something we're out there talking about and using community support to make sure we're getting the best possible data and responding to the need that the labor markets are actually telling us about. Next slide, please. And our final principle is improve outcomes for students with holistic supports. Next slide. Under that heading, we seek to bolster opportunities for quality education at an affordable price, such as expanding Pell and Promise scholarships. Those are the two, the two big ones, but we also want to ensure support is reaching beyond tuition, including fees, necessary costs of other, higher education books were mentioned earlier today, and making sure that there are supports for those as well when the opportunity comes. We have advocated for changes to Pell in the last 12 months. We'll continue to do so, ending the taxation of Pell, increasing the maximum, although they just tried to reduce the maximum, so maybe that's not a hill to die on at this point, but of course, we'll still be there talking about it. And just anything to help students access scholarships. We've talked about that in the context of FAFSA in the past and advocacy around how accessible that process is. Next slide. We promote local, state, and federal policies and investments that enhance vital, basic needs services. Our students are whole people outside of the classroom and need all of the things that everybody else needs and the things that they, the support that they get from both state and federal and really local, too. We get a lot of great local support, but going there and reminding them that there are lots of needs beyond just tuition and operations costs is an important part of our role. Next slide, please. We strengthen resources for students and groups who experience barriers to educational access, including working adults and parents, and we've supported FAFSA completion efforts and, again, advocacy around improving the access to FAFSA. Next slide. We elevate early college pathways to promote college access awareness and preparedness. Again, we got dual enrollment funding last year and put that to swift use, but supporting early college co-enrollment and dual enrollment and the early college instructor pipeline as well. Next slide. We work to improve transfer pathways to promote equitable access to bachelor's degrees. Once we got the authority for bachelor's degrees, that conversation came to a head very quickly about what's the best place for our students to go and continues at the Capitol to some extent. So supporting standardized methods of evaluating transfer credit and reducing administrative burden in achieving that transfer is, are ways that we can help advocate. Next slide. That's our agenda for this year. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, Dr. Thor?
Thank you very much for that presentation. I did not compare last year's legislative agenda to this one. So could you identify if there were any principles, bullet points, or examples last year that are no longer included? And similarly, are there bullet points and examples that are new this year?
Yes. The only substantive change I can think of to the content, I think I'm right about this, is we took out the term Hispanic-serving institution, since that is no longer the relevant tool for grant purposes at this time. We just changed the terminology. Other than that, as you can see, the agenda and the examples in it are very broad, and that's on purpose. We've seen a lot of things come at us, and it's, I think, best to keep a broad net in terms of what I am empowered to respond to, the things that we know that we might foresee. That being said, so that keeps it consistent year over year. That being said, of course, most of these things we will not probably deal with on a policy level each and every year.
Thank you.
Questions? Davis?
Great presentation, Lauren. Thank you very much. How much of our funding that we got this last year, which was a great How much of our funding that we got this last year, which was a great, successful year, in my opinion, how much of it was one time and how much, and it was the only ongoing, the Arizona Promise part?
That's correct, Ms. Davis. No, we, even our STEM dollars are not technically ongoing. They are implemented as a one-time, though we don't, though I don't mean to suggest that they are in any jeopardy. They don't get, as Kim was educating you all, they don't get rolled into the base. So they're not, there's still a point of discussion each year. So yes, the only thing that's due to continue to flow into next year is approximately $1 million to that Community College Promise Fund. The others will all be subject to debate.
And so I hate to put you on the spot, but what, I mean, the, the state budget is projected to need a lot more revenue.
Correct.
So we're going to really advocate for the state aid part. What, I wonder what our chances are?
I think, so I, I'm gathering from your, how you're asking the question, that I think you know the answer to this very difficult question. And that is that if we want to pursue in earnest the restoration of our state aid, our decks need to be clear to do it because we can only ask for so many things at once. That doesn't mean we can't ask for anything else. I think, I think that if the state can give us something small, they won't talk about giving us the big thing, even in a small portion. I think it is my opinion and advice that our best approach to restoring our, our state aid, and I don't pretend that it will be easy. I think it will be very hard and I'm dead serious about getting it done. I will get it done. It will probably take us a few years. But I don't think that talking about, well, we need these four things is going to be as effective or taken as seriously as saying, we're happy to talk about the ways that our programs, particularly adult ed, support the Arizona economy. And if that is a priority for the governor, for legislators, and they would like to give it funding, of course, we'll put it to excellent use. But what we are here to ask for is the restoration of our fundamental tie to the state of Arizona, the only true tether that we have to the state, and that's our, that's our operating aid. So we're going to have to walk in chew gum to some extent, but I, I think that leaving some of the smaller asks, as much as I have loved advocating for them and as much as they are still very important and valuable programs, I don't know that we can say, well, we need 28 plus six plus four plus, you know, I think it gets harder and harder, the, the more even small things that we ask for when we're asking for something that is big.
So do we anticipate going to them and asking them right out for the 28 to begin with?
I met with the governor's office last week and I asked them for $28.3 million in our operating aid restoration and told them that that was our top priority above other priorities, very preliminarily, without a real, you know, we don't have a strategy set for doing that, but my expectation based on the needs of our district is that that's the thing that we will be asking for as our number one ask this year. And I think that's particularly salient because our number one ask each of the last two years has come to being eventually through, through a hard thought process. So I think that we will continue to ask for that amount of money. I also think it would be wise for us to propose, and this gets into strategy that we don't have to settle right now, but it would be wise to propose a phase in over a number of years, you know, our ask last year was, you know, about $6 million. I mean, we asked for a few different, different things, but let's say $6 million as kind of the conservative number. A quarter of 28 is seven. That's not all that much more. Like maybe, maybe there's a pathway for us to start restoring that. And then it's a strategic decision for the district, for all of our colleges of where do we put that money? How do we backfill some of these things that had gotten state funding on a short-term basis in the past, past? Whether those are funded differently, funded with those dollars, that's, that's going to become kind of an inside decision.
So to that point, Lauren, obviously the focus on the one thing, and we'll go back to fairly recent history, which was the strategy for getting baccalaureate degrees done, is we had a single, there was some minor scuffle stuff. And you're absolutely correct, we kept trying to get sidetracked on the little stuff. And the message from this, this board and others was, this is the one thing we need. And it got accomplished. So I certainly am appreciative of that continued focus and, and your message to us that we need to not get sidetracked. We need to be absolutely focused. The other thing I was going to proffer, which you've already said, is the reason for all of this and this, in sort of generic format, is to give you the guidelines as you're sitting there within five minutes having to say, can we stand up and testify to this or talk to this? The guidance from the board in terms of where the policy parameters are. And we will be voting on this at the next board meeting to give you all of that to use as the justification for what you're going to say on our behalf.
Good.
Oh, Dr. Thor?
To your knowledge, will the Pima Community College District also be seeking restoration of their state aid? And if so, do you know what number they would be asking for?
Yes, they will be seeking the restoration of their state aid. I believe it's about $7 million. I should have that number committed better to memory. It's, it's seven point something. So yes, smaller than ours. Frankly, I don't think there's a pathway to our restoration that doesn't go through Pima. If only mathematically, they are a smaller number. It's easier for the state to, to do that. And so we, we are hoping, and we have a meeting set up to prepare us to work hand in glove with Pima on this. And we're hoping they will take the same approach as us, such as sort of clear the decks, let people get sick of you saying operating aid because you say it so much, but more, more to come on that.
Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Smith, any questions for Lauren?
I, I do, if, just one question, essentially, how will our legislative agenda interact, overlap or work with the larger AC4, AACT legislative agenda? And that's my question. Thank you. I'll go back on mute.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We worked with AC4 on their legislative agenda and they have highlighted as a priority, a top priority, the restoration of operating aid to both Maricopa and Pima. They will be working on other financial priorities as they're sort of, I think, what they're going to take meetings on. I don't think this is something that they're planning to go and actively advocate for on our, our behalf. I think we're sort of on our own to some extent in terms of pounding the pavement and that's okay. But we, we did align with them on that being a strategic priority of theirs. And we'll go into our meetings and reiterate that AC4 is in alignment with us, that this is a top priority.
President Bitter Smith, may I respond?
Because I was going to ask the question, but I think you can answer it.
Yes, thank you. There's, thank you, Lauren. You're, you're right in, in the AC4. As, as you all may recall, I'm currently serving as the chair of the AC4 in our state. And we actually have a meeting scheduled with the governor's office and the governor next week, where I'll get an opportunity to open it up for the other presidents. And in that, I will highlight the AC4's legislative agenda, the top priority being restoration of funding for Maricopa and Pima Community College districts. There's some general alignment between and purposeful alignment between AC4s and what we're seeing up here presented today. We're leaving it very broad as well in terms of seeking funding for workforce development, healthcare support and development. In the past, we've been very specific about pursuing funding for nursing, for example, but we've, we're looking to broaden that sort of support and hopefully it materializes into something.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Any other questions?
This is Ms. Smith. I just wanted to ask, I'm sorry if it's been stated, if, can we boil down what we see as the biggest one or two hurdles to the restoration of funding?
That is a great question. I'm doing a quick inventory of my whole brain. So I think the first and biggest hurdle is money. It's a lot of money relatively speaking in the state budget. It, it is a relatively large ask compared with, one, what we have typically asked for and two, the large majority of other sort of interest-based asks. And it's a difficult year financially. At least that's what, that is what is forecasted. So those two things come together to make a considerable obstacle. I think if it were, even in an excellent financial picture, it would still be hard to, to do to some extent. And that maybe is the second factor, which is just sort of general political will. Everybody has lots of different things that they care about and we are among them, but making this the thing that they're in the room asking for, that's going to, that's going to take some work and is an obstacle right now. I see that as, as fairly surmountable with sort of shoe leather and lots and lots of meetings. I think we'll get there. We'll move things our direction. But I think that, yes, just sort of the general, everybody has lots of things that they, that they care very much about. And elevating this to the degree where it is enough interest to get a large amount of money inserted into the state budget where it otherwise isn't, is just generally challenging.
Could we add, and maybe I can say this and you don't want to say this, it, it's a very parochial decision, which is why we need all of the collective effort of leadership in the district to make it a priority for those members who have votes to put us on the top of their list. And that has not always been the case for a variety of reasons, not, not in an adversarial way, just other things have crept up and maybe our voices need to be louder and stronger about how important this is.
Yes, that's right. And we'll work with everyone to make sure we're all singing from the same songbook on this. It will be a team, team effort, absolutely. But you're absolutely right. There's not some fantastic strategic vision of the entire budget that somebody offers and says, here's exactly how we want to do everything and then it gets approved. This happens sort of little by little on an interest basis. If there were some big strategic thing that we had to shoehorn ourselves into, that would almost be harder. So I'm, I, the process may work to our favor as, as we continue, but it, it will take some time.
Are there questions? Board members? If not, Lauren and Abby, thank you very much for your work. We have work ahead of us and it doesn't happen easily for some of us that have done it for a while. But this is a really big ask. And so maybe piece by piece, we will, we'll, we can get there. So Dr. Gonzalez, anything to close on this? If not, our next item of business for this evening is an executive session, which will mean that we will need to let some of you go home while we complete the rest of our work. So I'm going to do the motion to move into executive session and then we can spend a few minutes letting people depart. But does that work, Janice? Yeah. So board members, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ARS Title 3843103, subsection A3 for litigation update?
So move this.
So whatever. I will take your motion, Ms. Bell. Could that be a second?
Second.
Just second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by unanimous vote, two things have happened. We've adjourned the agenda review meeting, but we're going to move into executive session. So let's take just a couple of minutes to let those of you that don't have to sit through executive session, go on with the rest of your evening.